Goss, Harper, Ingram, King Taylor, Maguire, Patterson, Rector, Store, Summers, Taylor, Thorzlin.
Here.
Tinsley, Batschispati, Woken. Young.
Here.
Clemmons, Clifford. Covert, Eisenman, Ezri, Portado, Rosales.
Here.
Notice is hereby given that a study session of the County Board Champagne County Illinois will convene on February 26, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the Lyles Fields Meeting Room, Brookins Administrative Center, 1776 East Washington Street, Urbana, Illinois.
Hey, thank you. Stephanie has arrived. Approval of the agenda? Looking for motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Rosales, Mr. Harper, any discussion? Hearing none? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes. Actually, I don't, one, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have eight county board members present, so we do not have an official quorum to have an official meeting to vote on the agenda, but we're gonna still have our study session. So, moving forward, we, I don't know if we, I don't think we can even take public participation. Do you know, Deb, were the answer to that? We don't have an official meeting?
I, I think you're right. I think you can proceed with the discussion based on the notice of the meeting, but...
We can't do any official business, correct?
No.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so skipping public participation, it doesn't look like we had, well, maybe, I hope you didn't want to say anything, okay? Discussion, tonight, we, the strategic plan, it's the beginning of our strategic planning process, which the Board has agreed they'll spend the next five months of study sessions, if it, we'll see how fast we go on this. I just wanted to give a little bit of update to the Board on how I'd like to proceed with this. There is a small planning committee, but we're not hiring an outside facilitator to do the planning of the process. Several of the people on the staff, including myself and ESOC, have done strategic planning many times with other organizations, and so we felt like that would be an unnecessary cost. We will not be doing the actual facilitation of the group ourselves, because that's probably, we want you guys to feel like it's an objective process, and so we'll try to have different people lead different parts of the meetings. They won't all be the same every week. We're gonna change the activities that we do to get to the result that we want, and so what I'd like to do tonight is just agree on some ground rules to start with for how we're gonna operate these meetings, and I'm hoping we can get some agreement on these. They're on the back of your agenda. So, we, these are ones that the planning committee came up with, you can certainly add or subtract if you want, but these are the ones we came up with. So, starting and ending on time, we're planning that the meetings will run from 6:00 to 8:00. They may get done early, and that's fine, but that, so you know what time commitment you're committing to, we'll start at 6:00 and end no later than 8:00. Does that sound fine with everybody? Everybody okay with that? Okay, next is check your cellphones at the door. The biggest distraction at meetings like this is that people are not paying attention to what's going on in the room, and we really need you to not be on your cellphones. That's texting, calling, answering messages, whatever. Is everybody in agreement with that? Yeah?
Here's a couple of board members that cannot put it in their six, so they wanted to text them to be with them, or to be available, so today.
Uh huh. That you're still going?
Yeah, like, 'cause they're coming from out of town, so...
Okay. Okay, so that would be at the end of the meeting, right?
Well, they might text me once they get to town, so...
Oh, but that would be the only thing, you're saying, today, just this particular time. Okay, is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Mostly, okay. All right, all right. What we don't want is for people to be cross-talking during the meeting, or answering calls outside, or whatever, if people, you know, we're happy to share the information after the meeting about what happened at the meeting, it's not a secret, and of course, it'll be escaped if we're able to do that. Okay, all ideas are welcome. This is, this is an effort to say that there's not criticism at the meeting of ideas that come up, these are brainstorming sessions, and so we want people to generate ideas, some of which we will all think is really crazy, some of which some of us will think are really crazy, but we want to generate the ideas so that we have things to check into as far as new points. Obviously, if what exactly we were doing was working, it wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a problem right now. Everyone participates, and again, this goes back to, you know, being present in the room while you're here. One speaker at a time, so these, these have to do with just being in the conversation, trying not to walk all over each other. We are not doing Robert's Rules during study sessions, and so I'm not gonna be up here saying, you know, motions and all that. What I do want is for us to take turns speaking, and also to be respectful that we have a certain limited amount of time, so it's not a place for you to, you know, be verbose for hours, that, you know, get your whole viewpoints of everything you think. It's okay to disagree, and again, this goes back to all ideas are welcome. We are, we probably will disagree on various things at various points in time. I think in this particular group that we should be respectful also, even if going forward out of this group, there's gonna be disagreements. So, we need to learn to work with that and be able to comment on what we agree or disagree about, but stay on, but stay on point, which is the last one. And then, so those are the, those are the eight rules, or seven rules, I'm sorry, or is everybody in agreement with those? Do you want to take any off? Do you want to add any? Okay, looks like everybody's okay with that, all right. Then there's some tips to help us work together, and those are just down there, they're not really rules, but the idea of focus on the issue, not the person. Always, obviously, we're here to come up with some goals and plans, and we, we're not necessarily about the personalities. Somebody may say something in a way that's not as tactful as we would like, or as, you know, in a way that we would like to hear it, please try to be respectful of each other in the way that you're wording things, but, you know, realize that we will have some personality things, because we're all different people. I say things sometimes that people don't understand well, and I'm sure everybody else does at the time, so just focus on the issues we're trying to deal with and not the people. Seek to understand different viewpoints, obviously, if you're in a room with more than one person, you're gonna have some different viewpoints, and then if you disagree, try to offer a solution. It isn't really helpful to keep saying, you know, that isn't gonna work, or that's a bad idea. What's more helpful is if you can come up with things that might be a solution, that's what we're trying to get to. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, good, the ground rules are done, all right. So, tonight, we are gonna start with sort of some place where the county has been in past, and those of you that have been on the Board before, some of this might be a little bit familiar. The person that's gonna be facilitating and presenting tonight is Deb Bucy, who's been the former county administrator and is currently the transition administrator for the county. She has got a lot of history with the county, she understands the county's services and budgets pretty well, and so she has agreed to take some information from previous years of her experience and previous board orientations and previous budget cycles and different things, and try to just get us started off with basic information that we might need to start making decisions. So, Deb is sitting there, and she has a PowerPoint to start with tonight, and I would be happy to turn it over to her. Sure, Stan.
Is this, are we talking different than what the strategic plan we just did as a committee a year or two ago?
Basically, we're moving forward from that. This is a new Board, it's, and some of those things may apply, you may agree to keep some of them, but maybe change some things too, we don't know yet.
Well, I'm just curious, 'cause, you know, James Quisenberry basically chaired it, myself, I think Patsy was on it, Jack Anderson, and maybe Pi, I think, or Five O's, but several meetings as a committee. On the goals, mission statements, and I was just, are we changing that already? 'Cause it'd been like five years since that plan had been presented, and we just did it, I know it's been within the last two years.
Okay, so, well, let me say where I'd like to end up at the end. I would like to have a strategic plan that goes out six years, because it's beyond everybody's term here, so we're having more of a vision of where we'd like the county to be, rather than just a year-by-year kind of plan. And we, we would like to start with things that the county already has, so yes, we're gonna start with some of the work that's been done in the past. I can tell you the people that have been on my committee, I've got a, I called a small committee to help plan the sessions. Patsy was one of those people, because she was a former county board chair, and she has a pretty long history with the Board, so I wanted to get some of that historical stuff. Deb is part of the group, ESOC is a new member, but she's done strategic planning many times before, and then there's a young person, Ben, who works with the Economic Consulting Student Group on campus, that's gonna help us with some economic analysis kind of things, and add some, some of that to the project. So, those are the, that's been the planning group so far, that doesn't mean we're gonna do the, all the things, but that's been the planning group, trying to get different ideas and ways of dealing, ways, bringing exercises to you so that we can move forward. Okay? Any other questions? Okay, good, and Lorraine has joined us.
Okay, so to get us started tonight, we're actually not gonna start with the presentation, we're gonna ask you to brainstorm a little bit. So, I'm gonna give to each of you a form, and what we're asking you to write down is what currently are your three highest priorities for the county? And for each priority, how would you determine that we were successful in achieving that priority? We'll give you about 10 minutes to do that, and when you're done, just give your form to Darlene.
No, we're not doing spell check. And you can't use your cellphone to find out either.
Okay, so what we are gonna do right now, though, is before we talk about who Champagne County government is and all of that, talk about who we are, just to give you an opportunity in this informal setting to maybe get to know each other a little bit better, or know a little bit more about each other. So, I'm just gonna ask some questions, and raise your hands. So, if you were born in Champagne County and lived here all your life, raise your hand. So, we have four. Okay, if you were born in Illinois and have lived in Illinois all your life, raise your hand. Well, those four, but are there any others? Okay, then, if you think you probably came to, immigrated to Champagne County from the furthest distance, say, say that, tell me where you came from, if you think you came from further than anyone else did.
Rialdo, Missouri.
Missouri? Anyone think they came from further away? Rialdo? I think you win. Anybody think they can beat that? Nobody beats that, right? Okay. Just a couple other questions about how much you've interacted with county government. So, raise your hand if you have ever obtained a vital record from the county clerk's office. Almost everyone, okay? And raise your hand if you have been in the Champagne County courthouse. All of you, that's great, okay? All right. So, we may do a little more of that later on, but right now, we'll go ahead and get started. So, the, the thing that I have for you now is a presentation. I'm giving you all a hard copy of the presentation, and sometimes it's hard to be on the board. But all this presentation is that make sure we're all understanding that what you've said about the importance of taking county government is part of this community complex. And the reason taking county government makes this is to provide services to the community. So, with that, we'll first look at, who is the Champagne County community? Well, this is our demographics, as of the report, the most recent report I could find, which is the U.S. Census Bureau, five-year estimates based on 2012 to 2016. So, in terms of population, our total population, 2,09,399, and that's actually, and most updated from July 1, 2017. The race of our population, 73.1% white, 12.6% black or African-American, 10.2% Asian alone, those are the three largest categories, and obviously make up about 95% of the total population. The balance is in smaller groups of American Indian and Alaska Native, or Native Hawaiian and other Pacific, some other race alone, or two or more races. In terms of ethnicity, we're 5.6% Hispanic or Latino. This one, I think, is pretty interesting, we are just about evenly matched in terms of gender. We're right at 50% male, 50% female. Age, we have 19% of our population is under 18 years, which means they're school age or younger, basically. 18 to 24 years is a little bit higher percentage, and that's because the University of Illinois, 23.5%. 25 to 44 years, 25.5%, 45 to 64, 20%, and then 65 years and older, only 11%. So, I don't know, I guess people leave after they get old. The median age right now is 29.5 years. The medium household income, 48,899, medium family income, 72,889, and per capita income, 27,373. We tend to be a little bit low, and that's, again, basically because of the population of students that we have in the community. Overall family income distribution, we have 24.3% of our households that exist under $50,000 annual income. 36.06% make from 50,000 to 100,000, 18% from 100,000 to 150,000, 6.4% from 150,000 to 200,000, and 7.17% over $200,000. So, that's, I'll look at the community that all of Champagne County government serves. This next slide is the county's organization chart, and I also included in your packet a full-size page of the organization chart so that you could more easily read it. This organization chart is broken down into functional groups of county services. So, the yellow, the yellow departments, basically all elected officials, represent the justice and public safety offices or court system. The green represent the real estate tax cycle system, and three of those are elected, one is appointed, that's the supervisor of assessments, which is a position that can be either elected or appointed, and in Champagne County, it's appointed. In some counties, that's an elected position, just like the recorder, auditor, and coroner also can be either elected or appointed. And then down at the bottom, under Boards and Commissions, you see the Board of Review, which is also an appointed body. Those green all take care of the real estate tax cycle system. The dark blue departments and offices are basically the administrative offices of county government, which does include two elected officials, the county executive and the auditor. And then the light blue are basically boards and commissions, which are appointed by the Board, but then somewhat independent in terms of their operations, except they still continue to be part of the Champagne County budget process. And then the orange highlighted ones are the miscellaneous group, which just kind of don't fit anywhere else. And we're gonna talk about all of these groups in more detail as, as we move forward here. Another area I kinda wanted to cover before we get into the actual departments is the organization, or organization and authority that the statutes prescribe for the county Board and for the elected officials. So, one of the primary responsibilities of the county Board is to appropriate the monies for all the elected officials, and it does this with the budget that it adopts every year. So, adopting the budget and adhering to the budget is one of the county Board's most basic and primary functions, and the statutory site for that is there. There are statutory sites all through this presentation, I have them there so that you can go reference them if, if you're curious about reading more about each of these areas. Pursuant to the statutes, well, I'm gonna go next door to the elected officials. The county Board sets the budget, but the, each elected official has the statutory power and duty to exercise control over the internal operations of their own offices, which operations of their own offices, which pertains to equipment, materials, services, and personnel. So each elected official has complete control and authority to make decisions about those issues within the budget that is appropriated to that elected official by the county board. Going back to the county board, pursuant to the statutes, the county board does have some control over personnel. The county board determines the number of assistant states attorneys and the number of sheriff's deputies and court security officers. So those two officials cannot hire more in those categories of jobs, more positions than what the county board has authorized. Going right to the elected officials, the elected officials, though, determine the compensation for their personnel within the budgeted authority established by the county board. Okay, I want to talk about that a little bit because you could see how there could be conflict there. The county board establishes the budget for personnel for the elected official. The elected official decides how much he or she's going to pay his employees. So how do we make that work? Well, historically, the elected officials and county board have worked cooperatively through the county's salary administration system. So the county board has established a system where every job is classified and assigned to an appropriate salary range. The elected official, then, if they want to change a position or add a new position, brings a request to the county board to do that, and you've seen that through the job content evaluation committee requests that you've seen. So the elected official asks for the authority from the board to establish the new position to a specific salary range. Based on that authorized schedule of positions, the county board can then establish what the budget should be for that elected official based on the positions that effectively they've both agreed on. If an elected official were to decide that they weren't going to follow that process and eliminate, take one job that maybe was previously in a lower salary grade and just decide to change that job and make it bigger but not talk to the county board about it, and pay that individual a lot more money because they had savings in their personnel budget that year and could do it? When the county board establishes the budget for that elected official for the ensuing year, the elected official risks losing the budget for that position because the county board is going to budget for that position based on somewhere between the minimum and the maximum for the salary range for that position. And if the elected official has made changes and not had them approved, then the elected official risks not having an appropriate budget for the positions that they want to operate their offices. So while they have autonomy, there are those limitations for the elected official. On the board's side, with regard to the elected officials, it's almost always advisable to accept, at least to look at, the recommendation for a new position or an adjustment to an existing position because that really rests with the elected official, and then to carefully evaluate and consider whether or not the board is willing to, you know, allow that change to occur, you know, for the budgeting purposes. And typically, both sides have good reasons for the changes or additions that are to take place, and historically, the system has worked very well. But I just wanted you to understand how it doesn't just become total chaos, which it could, if we didn't have a system like this in place where there's a check and balance for the board and for the elected officials to work together on this issue. Are there any questions?
You gave the example of salary. Does that work the same way for equipment as well? So that if we have approved a certain amount for equipment, and an elected official chooses to go above that amount, how does that work? Is that different from the salary example you gave?
That's probably a different process. Basically, if an elected official has a very urgent need for something equipment-wise or technology-wise that perhaps was unforeseen, they could come to the board and request it, you know, through an amendment to the budget. Otherwise, the budget preparation process really addresses that issue. So all of our capital assets for elected officials, which are their furnishings and their technology needs, things like that, are budgeted in the capital asset replacement fund. And every year, that is reviewed with what used to be the county administrator, now be the county executive, preparing the budget to determine, do we need to make adjustments to this? Do we need to add something? Can something be deleted? So that's done that way, still done cooperatively with the county board's parameters in place. Did that answer you? Okay. Jim?
We work together, like you said, to determine the budget, but really the budget is the budget. The department that's gathered is based on those dollars available to the county. The elected official decides bargaining on that. And then somebody else sorts it out the budget. And the county board can say, yeah, because everybody has a rate. And the reality is that the budget is the budget.
That's right. And that ultimately falls to the county board. So the county board may get multiple requests for lots of new positions or changes like that during the budget process, and it becomes incumbent on the county board to make a reasoned decision based on what they know about the finances and what they know about the necessity of the requests. And that's a balancing process that we typically do towards the end of the budget process. Finally, the county board has the mandatory duty to maintain and provide the finances for a suitable courthouse, jail, and other necessary county buildings, including appropriate office and furnishings. And this is another of the county board's primary responsibilities with regard to how we provide services to the citizens of the county. And then on the elected official's side, when the elected official and county board are co-employers for a collective bargaining agreement, the wages are established by the agreements rather than solely by the elected official. So again, the elected officials have a lot of flexibility with regard to how they hire and what they pay, but if they're dealing with bargaining unit positions, they need to adhere to all of the requirements in the collective bargaining agreement itself as to how they hire and how much they pay and those kinds of issues. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later as well. So in this next section, we're going to talk about each of the county organization groups, providing you with information about current budget authority, current staffing, and the statutory authority for each of those groups. So all of the elected officials' primary budgets and offices function out of the general corporate fund. So this is a look at how that breaks down. Clearly, the justice and public safety offices or criminal justice system require most of the resources available to the general corporate fund at $22.6 million. The administrative departments represent $7.4 million. Miscellaneous is 5.3. And then the real estate tax cycle departments are $3.3 million. So the justice and public safety offices, representing 58.5% of the general corporate budget, include these budgets and these officials. So the sheriff, the sheriff has a 2019 general corporate fund budget of $12.5 million, and that's for law enforcement, for running the jail and corrections, and for emergency management. In addition to his general corporate fund budget, he has a special revenue funds budget of $350,100. Special revenue funds are funded through fees, specific fees, and they're appropriated for specific purposes. So for example, the sheriff's special revenue funds include jail commissary, medical for inmates, and forfeiture's funds. So he has the combined total expenditure authority of both his general fund budgets and his special revenue fund budgets in fiscal 2019. He has 154.5 FTEs. Clearly, the sheriff's operation is the largest in county government, and the statutory authority for the operation of the sheriff's office is there. I'm providing that statutory authority to you for each of them because I couldn't possibly, couldn't possibly go through the mandated responsibilities of all of these offices in three meetings like this. But I did do one thing. This is the sheriff's statutory authority and responsibilities out of the statutes. So you can see what this looks like. This is, this document, it's about 14 pages long. This is the county board's duties and powers. So you can see, there's a pretty significant difference. Most of the ones for the elected officials are all going to look kind of like the sheriffs. There is much in the duties and responsibilities and powers of the county board that don't pertain to this board because there are a lot of things that you can do that you don't do. But I'm just pointing this out to you that, you know, these things are in the statutes. And if you want to know more about it, you can always go to the ILGA.gov website and, you know, learn and read as much as you want to know. The state's attorney is another elected official in the justice system. Her general corporate fund budget is almost $2.7 million, and her special revenue funds budget is $67,858. She has a total complement of 43 FTEs and the authorities there. The circuit clerk has a general fund budget of $1,272,059. And actually, her special revenue funds budget authority is greater than her general fund budget authority. It's at 1.3 million. They're close, but she has a number of special revenue funds with which she uses to operate the record systems and the automation for the court system. She has 40.17 FTEs. The courts, which are the responsibility of the presiding judge, have a total budget in the general corporate fund of $1,070,176, and the special revenue funds budget of $194,734. There are 15.5 FTEs in the courts department budget. That does not include the judges. They are state employees, so they are not included in Champagne County employee counts. The public defender, who is not elected but who reports directly to the presiding judge, not to the county board but to the presiding judge, has an annual budget of 1.1 million. There are no special revenue funds for him, and he has a complement of 18 FTEs. Probation and court services, which includes the juvenile detention center, also reports directly to the presiding judge. Their budget is $3.4 million, and they have a special revenue fund budget in the amount of $790,000 with 62 FTEs. And the coroner, who's considered justice and public safety related, although he's not really courts-related, as the rest of the officials on this page are, has a total budget of almost $580,000. No special revenue fund and six FTEs. I'm sorry, what? Yeah, let's see. All of those employees listed are paid by the county. Those are all county employees. The judges are paid by the state. All those employees are paid by the county. The state reimburses the county for 2/3 of the state's attorney's salary, her salary, because that's considered a state official position. And there are a couple of assistant states attorneys in the state's attorney's budget for which we get reimbursement from the state because we have a university here. But, yeah, they're all county employees. If they're showing up on these sheets, they are county employees. The real estate tax cycle, smallest group we have, represent 8.5% of the general corporate budget. They may be small, but they're very important because they bring in all the money for the property taxes. So the recorder's total budget is $1,357,553, and he has special revenue fund budget with an appropriation of $248,318, has a total of 5.5 FTEs. The supervisor of assessments, which I previously stated could be elected, is appointed in Champagne County, has a total budget of $380,428, and no special revenue fund with seven FTEs. And clearly, the majority of that budget is for personnel, with the other big expenditure is for publication of property values. The board of review has a budget of $135,105 for three FTEs, and that's basically almost a personnel-only budget. The county clerk has a budget of $1.14 million, just about, for the general fund and special revenue fund budget of $291,552 for 16 FTEs. And the treasurer has a general fund budget of $277,189 with a special revenue fund of $112,613, and has five FTEs. The miscellaneous departments that are included in the general corporate fund budget represent 13.7% of that budget. Extension education is basically the result of the voters approving a property tax in 1995 to fund extension education, so that is a pass-through. And the total budget is $439,412 in 2019. There are no employees associated, there are no county employees associated with that function. The regional office of education is established under statutory authority where the counties covering the regional office contribute to its operation, and our fair share contribution for this fiscal year is $221,636. Again, none of the employees of that regional office of education are county employees, and we share the responsibilities with Ford County. The veterans assistance commission has a total budget of $125,858, and there's one employee who is a county employee but who is appointed by the veterans association. He's not appointed by the county board. And it's all spelled out in the statutes how that works. And the primary function of that office is simply, almost all of the money appropriated, other than for his salary, goes to assistance to veterans. And then there's the general county budget, which is a miscellaneous budget. And that's where we collect in revenue all the property and sales taxes that are general revenues. But the county board uses that budget to appropriate for things like we provide a contribution to the Urbana Library because we occupy a certain percentage of their archives, and we pay for legal services that are general to the county out of that budget. We pay for the outside audit out of that budget. A number of expenditures, and they're all delineated on the budget page for the general county budget, if you want to see them. Yes?
Sorry if you covered this while I was not here. So these, we've got, you know, these FTEs that are covered, that, you know, their salaries come from these budget lines here, right? So for example, the recorder has 5.5 FTEs, and those come from that $1.3 million, right?
Right.
Okay.
Or, actually, you chose recorder. The recorder does pay for personnel out of his special revenue fund as well.
Okay, let's pick.
But within his budget authority.
Sure, whatever. My question is that there are associated benefits for these employees like healthcare, IMRF contributions and so on.
No.
Those do not come out of the budget total, right?
Health insurance for the general corporate fund employees is paid out of the general county budget, which I just described.
Okay.
IMRF is paid out of the IMRF fund, and social security is paid out of the social security fund. So those benefits costs are not included in the general corporate fund budget.
Okay, so except for healthcare, which is in the general county fund?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And Chris?
To follow up on that, I guess, does the employees pay the FICA and IMRF, or where does that money come from, if not from the county revenue fund?
Well, there are employer contributions to FICA and IMRF and employee contributions. And for both IMRF and FICA, the employer contributions for the general corporate fund employees come from the property tax that is levied for those two funds. And the employees' contributions come out of their paychecks and get deposited directly into those funds. The last group of departments is the administrative departments, which represent 19.2% of the total general corporate fund budget. The county board is the first one listed there, and the general fund budget for the county board is $286,165. The special revenues funds budget for the county board is nearly $10 million. And that includes self-funded insurance for property liability and workers' comp. It includes the public safety sales tax fund, debt service funds, the solid waste fund, and the GIS fund. I thought you might want to know which special revenue funds were directly appropriated to the county board. There is a debt service fund in the general corporate. There is a debt service fund in the general corporate budget, and that's listed there. The county executive slash administrative services, total budget, $852,838. And the special revenue fund budgets appropriated to the executive are 16, almost .5 million. And those represent IMRF, social security, health insurance, the capital asset replacement fund, and courts construction because it's tied to capital asset replacement. And that lines with the executive's responsibilities for day-to-day administration of employees and facilities. The IT department has a total budget of $1,051,223 and has 10 employees. The auditor's office has a budget of $395,113 and has six employees. Planning and zoning, budget of $455,987 with seven employees. And public properties has a budget of $4,094,359 with 22.5 employees. The public properties budget is probably the biggest budget outside of the sheriff in, of any of the department budgets because we budget for facilities maintenance and a lot of facilities care issues. All of those kinds of things come out of the public properties. Utilities for all, all general corporate fund departments come out of the facilities budget, so that's why it's such a big budget. So, yeah.
You mentioned that there's a solid waste fund. About how much is that?
It's down to a very small amount. I'm sorry, I don't have that with me tonight. I could probably get on the internet and look. That's leftover from the Illinois Solid Waste Disposal Association Agreement from the early 90s and when it was dissipated. There were monies distributed to each of the contributing entities. And we typically use that money for the recycling programs and things like that. It's a separate fund. It's not in the general corporate fund. And I could get that for you, I just don't know. Stephanie? Not elected officials, no. They are not charged back for any of those kinds of, if they're in the general corporate fund. If they're outside of the general fund, then they are charged. So the next group are also administrative funds, but they're special revenue funds, not included in general corporate. And these two are highway and animal control. And you can see there what their 2019 budgets and number of employees are. They are special revenue funds by definition, so they just have the budget that is appropriated to their funds. Boards and commissions, which are basically, the county board's authority with regard to their operations is basically limited to budget approval, but for at least the first three, also the appointment of the members of the board who make the decisions about how their budgets are spent. So the first one is the mental health board, which was created by a voter-approved resolution, referendum in 1972. And their total budget for fiscal 2019 is $5,527,793. And this is a property tax-based budget. The developmental disabilities board is very similar. It was created by a voter-approved resolution in 2004. And the total budget, you see there, is about 4.3 million. The county public health fund, also a voter-approved resolution that was approved in 1996. Their total budget is $993,407. The regional planning commission is created under the county's authority. And so the county, under the county's code, has the ability to create the regional planning commission. The statutory site is there. And then a commission is created, and they're the ones that have basic decision-making authority about the overall budgets. Their primary sources of revenue are federal and state grants and fees. Many of their grants require county board approval because they're awarded to Champaign County. Head start is a good example. But that's how they're, they're completely funded with those revenues that are, they then collect. And then the GIS consortium, you can see their budget there. And this consortium was created through the Intergovernmental Agreements Act that the county is able into, able to enter into intergovernmental agreements with other entities. That's what they've done here. And the fee is established through the governing board for the consortium, which was established with the intergovernmental agreement that the county entered into there.
So, exactly, the regional planning commission, the board off the line. But you have many federal state grants.
It's all federal and state grants and some fees. But the fees are basically member fees that are paid by the member agencies. For example, we pay a fee for QOTS, and we pay a fee just to be a member of the regional planning commission. But the majority of the mon, I mean, the fees are minimal in comparison to what, it's primarily grant-funded. That's their budget, too. And their budget is almost always overstated because it's very difficult to predict grants. So that if you looked at the actual for 2018, it's probably closer to $2 million less than what was originally budgeted.
I guess in what sense do we actually approve the budget for the mental health board and the developmental disabilities board? Because I would think that budget line just comes from whatever the property tax levy is.
That's exactly right. They, though, those budgets are included in the Champaign County budget. So when you approve the Champaign County budget, you're approving their budgets as well. The property tax is basically, you know, their revenue source, and then how they spend that is up to their board.
Right, but we don't, like, you know, we can change, for example, the amount of money we give to the county treasurer, right?
Yes.
But we can't, can we change, could we change the amount of money we give to the mental health board?
You can't change the property tax levy that they receive.
Right.
It has to be calculated according to PTAL. And they, they are separated from the county's other aggregate levies, which there are 10 of them. So the county board can move property tax levy money from IMRF to the general fund or from tort to highway, but you can't move the mental health board or DD board's property tax authority.
Right, so we sort of say, yes, this is how much property tax money, or what your property tax levy is, but we couldn't change it. So we sort of just rubber stamp it, I guess, in a sense?
More or less. I mean, I imagine there are probably, it's never been done since 1996, but I assume the board could attempt to levy less so that the mental health board would have, but the money would then be lost. Under PTAL, if you don't levy it this year, you're never going to get it back. So it would be, it would result in a reduction in services because all that money goes towards basically is services in the community. No. Okay, so in this next section, I just want to give you some additional information about the Champaign County General Corporate Fund. So this is looking at the fund by expenditure classification type. And I think it's important for the county board to understand that 68% of the general corporate fund budget goes to personnel. We really operate on very slim margins in all other areas of the general fund budget. So 1% goes to debt, and if and when the nursing home sale goes through, that will go away. The inter-fund revenue is 5%. Capital is 1%. Services are 19%, and commodities are 6%. And on this next slide, I'm giving you a comparison with our comparable counties. Yeah, Stephanie? That's a $4 million nursing home bond that will be paid off. So probably in the early, around 2000, we developed a system of obtaining comparable information about positions and budgets from comparable counties in the state of Illinois. And those five counties at that time had a population between 150,000 and 200,000 and basically were very similar economically. They were Champaign, Peoria, McLean, Sangamon, and Rock Island. So for many, many years, we did comparables with those five counties. And the reason is, we have 11, we used to have 13, 11 different bargaining units. And under the, the labor law in the state of Illinois, when we're bargaining with our employees and they want comparisons of what other similar jobs are paid, we have to use county comparables. Probably because only counties have recorders of deeds and supervisors of assessments and sheriffs. So these are the five counties that we've always compared with. When we started doing it, we were the third-largest county, and Rock Island County had a population of over 150,000. About four years ago, Champaign County moved up gradually and moved to being the largest county in that group of five. And we felt at that point it was important to add another county that was at least larger than us for these comparable purposes, particularly when we're in negotiations, that we aren't always the largest county. So I'm giving you this information just so you can kind of get a baseline about how our general fund operates. So the, the first line is the population of each of those counties. The second line is, in 2018, what was the total number of FTEs each of those counties had for their general fund operations? And as we've just gone through, general fund operations are basic, the basic services that we've, that we've looked at through these previous slides. And you can see from that comparison that although we're the second-largest county, we're the second-lowest in total number of FTEs for our general fund out of the six counties comparison. I think Champaign County's done an excellent job, especially since 2008, '09, in maintaining its level of services in spite of some significant reductions in personnel that we had to make in 2009 and '10 because of the economic recession. So that's just important information, I think, for you all to be aware of, remembering that 68% of the total general fund budget goes to personnel. And the personnel that we have is already probably operating, again, with fairly slim margins. And then the bottom line shows the total fiscal year 2019 budget for each of those counties for their general funds. I provided this to you, but I'm going to give you a caveat, and that is, is this is not always apples to apples as much as you might think. Our public safety sales tax revenue is separate from our general fund budget, and that's a little over 4 million. And some of these counties have their public safety sales tax collected within their general fund budget. So just for you to be aware that there, you'd have to do a really deep analysis to know how totally coordinated these comparisons are. But just again, information for you to be aware of. Then I talked about collective bargaining units. Wanted to make sure that you understand how that works as well. So Champaign County has 11 collective bargaining units. We have 13 today, but there are two that are the nursing home collective bargaining units, which we anticipate will not continue in the, in the future. So 11 collective bargaining units. The oldest one is the AFSMI highway unit, which has 13 FTEs. And the county board is a sole employer. So that means the county board negotiates with AFSMI about what the terms and conditions will be for that contract. The AFSMI general unit, the clerical workers unit, the county board is a co-employer with six of the elected officials. The auditor, the coroner, the county clerk, the recorder, the sheriff, and the treasurer all have employees covered by this contract. Remember, they all have authority to make decisions about their personnel, so they're co-employers with the county board. So we have, we work together with the county board in establishing what the authority is. Typically, the county board determines what the economic authority is for the contract, and if there are terms that are more related to operations, those decisions fall to the elected officials. And historically, the elected officials accept that because, again, you, the county board, sets the budget. So they have to operate within the authority that the county board gives. For the circuit court unit, the circuit clerk unit, and the state's attorney unit, those, the county board is not the employer. The circuit court, it's the presiding judge. The circuit clerk, it's the circuit clerk and the state's attorney. The state's attorney is the employer. Again, for those, those are all clerical units. So typically, what we do in negotiations is combine all four of those clerical units, the general unit and circuit clerk, courts and state's attorney, and we negotiate together when it comes to economics. Because we're all going to need to follow whatever the economic authority is that the county board has granted. So that's how that has worked, and I imagine will continue to work. Stephanie? Yes? There is a head start unit for which the county board is a sole employer. And then for FOP, law enforcement, corrections, correction sergeants, and court security, the county board and the sheriff are co-employers. And then finally, FOP court services, the presiding judge is the, is the sole employer on that one. Again, for that one, the county has often not been involved in those negotiations at all, other than to let the presiding judge and his negotiators know what the economic authority is for that contract. Okay, and then another thing, just, I think you probably all understand this, but just to say it, amending the budget is something that can be done after the budget is adopted. The adoption of the budget only requires a majority vote, but if the budget is going to be changed, it requires a two-thirds vote of the county board, which is 15 votes. An amendment can be done to increase or decrease appropriations. A board-approved budget transfer would be required to move one appropriation of any one fund to another of the same fund. This mean, this is required if a transfer of monies is going to go from personnel to non-personnel line items or vice versa. From like commodities to personnel, the board has to approve it. In other words, an elected official, a department head cannot change the total dollars of their personnel budget because they have savings in other areas of operation within their, within their budget. And then we have, we typically budget for a contingent line in the general county budget, and that's to be used for items that were unforeseen when the budget was established. If there is a transfer from the contingent to another line item within the general fund budget, that, too, would have to be approved by two-thirds vote of the board, 15 votes. Again, the amending the budget is used to address unusual events, unforeseen situations, things that were not predicted, and emergencies. Okay. So this last section is just to give you an update of where we are with current strategic priorities. And these were established by the previous county board and are being, after this, have been built into the budget. So the, the current infrastructure for facilities, just last year, the county board adopted a 10-year plan for the maintenance of facilities, which is the first time that's been done in over 40 years. The county board has historically ignored maintenance of facilities, and the county board, last year, changed that, and that's a good thing. It's important to understand what this capital plan includes and doesn't include. At this time, it doesn't include the nursing home or the downtown jail because it's anticipated that different outcomes will be attained for those two facilities. The, this plan also does not cover paint and carpet. It's, it's basically covering building envelope, building mechanics, mechanical controls, business continuation, and parking lots, roads, and sidewalks for which the county is responsible. So in fiscal year 2018, we budget, the county budgeted $532,000 for facilities maintenance. Based on this 10-year plan, in fiscal year 2019, that had to be increased to 1.15 million, and it was. So that was a $600,000 increase to the county budget that had to be appropriated in 2019 that hadn't previously been appropriated and is recurring. In fiscal year 2020, to achieve this facilities plan, the county board is going to have to find a million dollars in new revenue to cover maintaining this plan moving forward. And that will be an important consideration when you're dealing with the fiscal 2020 budget. Are there any questions about that? Rondell?
I think this was right before I got on the board. But what was sort of the thought of where that million dollars is going to come from? Maybe someone here knows who was on the board then? Maybe someone here knows who was on the board then, who helped track that plan?
I believe there are some savings that were achieved in debt service in the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, which helped with funding that in fiscal year 2019, and should provide some flexibility to the board in appropriations that might help with that in 2020 as well. In addition to any, you know, growth in revenue from sales tax growth or anything like that is probably going to have to be appropriated here first with the 2020 budget. Anyone else? Okay, the other critical area for county infrastructure for which the board is responsible is technology. And so, this just outlines what is happening and has happened in the last year or so. So, funding for the implementation of the real estate tax cycle software, DevNet, to replace the current in-house system, is in the 2019 budget, and that project is being implemented, and that was an addition of about $100,000 to this year's budget. The jail management software as a service and law enforcement civil processing software as a service also included in the fiscal 2019 budget. The total one-time cost is 363,095, which is spread over two years, so about 180,000 per year, and the recurring annual cost is 136,278 after that initial two years. So, it's appropriated this year, and similar appropriation next year, and then, in the third year, it would go down a little bit. 24/7 Information Security Operations Center System is funded in 2019 after the county experienced three service virus outbreaks in 2018, and the annual cost for that, which is a new cost this year, is $60,000 and needs to be carried forward in future years. Replacing the county's in-house financial and human resources system with cloud-based enterprise resource planning software is planned for fiscal 2020, and this is critical. The accounting system is included in this. The accounting system program was written 40 years ago in RPG language, which is no longer taught, and which is very difficult to find anyone who can work with it, and which our programmer, who helped write the program 40 years ago, is due to retire within the next year or so. The other part of it is our accounting system totally lacks any level of robustness for doing analytics or really working on information that is required in today's age that wasn't required 40 years ago when it was developed. So, that's going to be a priority for 2020. The current estimated cost for this system is in a range from 1.5 to 2.5 million. We anticipate being able to pay for that over a five-year period, so that's anywhere from a 300,000 to a $500,000 increase that will be required in the 2020 budget to accomplish that. And finally, replacing the animal control business and kennel management software should be prioritized in 2020, as these systems are also written like 40 years ago in RPG language and don't really accomplish the level of efficiency for the operation of that office that we could have with better software. So, those are the basic priorities that have been identified, and hopefully, will continue to move forward as we move forward this year. So, in summary, this presentation hopefully was, it was intended to provide you with an overview of the structural authority and current cost of providing mandated services to the citizens as you evaluate your strategic planning process for moving forward. And I just would ask, are there any other questions?
I have one. So, what would happen if perhaps we sell the county downtown jail? Will some of that money go to adding on to the satellite? Is it worth millions of dollars? I know it's in pretty bad shape.
So, Charles, that's what we're trying to do at our strategic plan. So, that's not, there's several options of what could happen with different things. So, the board will make decisions about what you want to prioritize in the next six years, and then, we have to come up with a plan of each year, what we're going to do to achieve that. So, that's what we're trying to do here.
Okay. Jump the gun, huh?
Okay, I've got a couple of questions for you then. So, can the coroner transfer money from his office supplies line item to his personnel line item so he can give his chief deputy a much-needed raise? No, why not? That's right. So, ultimately... Well, the only way he could do it is if he brought it to the county board with a budget transfer and the board approved it, and he'd have to tell you why he was doing that. Right, yeah. Can the sheriff negotiate with FOP for his law enforcement officers by himself? Nope. What does he have to do? He has to talk to the, actually, he has to talk to the labor committee about what the authority is that he has to negotiate, yeah. And, this might be a tough one, how does the county board determine the appropriation for each office, specifically elected officials, for the next budget year? Yeah, no. It is, you're close. I mean, it is based on the authorized staffing, the county board's authorized staffing budget for the sheriff, and current salaries. So, a little bit of both, okay. All right, now, we're going to do one of those fun things to help you get to know each other better and to help you get up and move around. So, if you own a dog, come and stand over here. If you own a cat, come and stand over here. If you own a cat and a dog or more, go over there. If you own pets that aren't cats and dogs, go over there, and if you don't have pets, go over there. Okay, five minutes are up. Let's start up again, please. We have an exercise to finish up with, a little bit more information, so please get seated and we'll get finished. Okay, guys. Thank you. Okay, well, the last document that you've been provided is the current county board strategic plan, which sets forth the values, the vision, the mission, defining the values and the goals that the county board previously came up with, and includes listing the initiatives under each goal that the county board hopes to achieve. One thing I want you to be aware of is that in the budgeting process, the departments are asked to align their own specific initiatives that, for the functioning and operations of their offices, that align with the county board's goals. This is done in an attempt to develop performance-based budgeting, which the county has never actually been able to completely accomplish, but it is a goal, and using a strategic plan is an important piece of moving towards that. So, your development of a plan for moving forward for the next six years is important for not just the board, but for all of the elected officials and department heads who administer county government. The second document that I provided just demonstrates what a county board initiative is, and it's also attached, there's also more of it attached to this first document. I didn't realize this was going to be included. But, basically, under each goal, what is the county board initiative? And that's something that you need to work towards identifying now in the early stage of the strategic planning process. And what are the activities in the next two years, which is the session of the current board, in the next four years, and in the next six years that you want or hope to see accomplished, and the outcomes that you expect to achieve from them? So, this ties back to the first exercise you did tonight when you got here, which is to talk about what is your priority and how would you value whether or not we had accomplished or succeeded with regard to that priority? So, these are, I'm not going to read all this to you or go through all of this with you, but these are just documents to help you understand what the county board in the past has identified with regard to the goals that are established with the strategic plan, and help you think about how you might want to look at this moving forward.
On this sheet, it looks like in the first column, well, the county board initiatives and... Oh, I was going to say that the spreadsheet cut off the words. I'm sorry.
If you look at the strategic plan document... We can talk, I mean, if anybody has questions about any of these things later, it's a lot, this has been a very lot to absorb for one night, as you probably imagine. Some of you have more experience on the board, so you may have heard parts of this before, but some of you are new. It's a lot of information. This was more of a presentation style, first project here, first evening, first session. I think the rest of the sessions will not be as much narrative, they will be more activities for you guys to participate in. So, I'm just letting you know that, moving forward, we'll do some different kinds of things. So, are there any last questions for Deb before we finish tonight? We're going to be done early.
I have one. Just a question. Going back to the budget, you said that's what, 122 million that you summarized? What happened to the 135 I was told? And I campaigned on that.
Well, were you using information about the fiscal 2018 budget, which probably was 135, because we had a nursing home in fiscal 2018? This is the fiscal 2019 budget. This is the fiscal 2019 budget, which does not include a nursing home. So, you're fine. Jim?
And that 122, is a lot, a lot of that is pass-through money, too? Our budget that we really have control over is only, what, 30-some million dollars?
Thirty, 38.6. The general fund budget is the primary budget that you will focus most of your energy and attention to. The special revenue funds, as I said, they're created with special fees or special revenues like highway, the property, they're property tax funds only, but most of your energy and attention in decision-making goes towards the general corporate fund decisions that have to be made for that budget. Okay, anything else? Prashil?
Yeah, and maybe this is more sort of a general, sort of my feeling about this. Like, I think it's a great idea to develop, like, update our strategic plan, but just for these meetings, I would like to see sort of a more detailed agenda than this. You know, I'd like to know what we're going to be talking about before I come into, like, because if I come into the meeting and get handed a pile of stuff and see a presentation, it's hard for me to sort of take that in and respond to that if I haven't had a chance to sort of at least briefly look it over in advance and know what we're going to be talking about. So, for these few, if we're going to continue having these study sessions, then I'm fine with that, but I would just like to know what we're going to be talking about at the study session and get these documents in advance of the session.
Right, and that's why I'm saying, tonight was basically information like this. Other meetings probably will not be like this. They're not going to have, like, here's handouts of information for you to absorb.
Right, but if, you know, we're saying today, the goal of the strategic session is to talk about, you know, I don't know, suppose we're talking about high-quality public facilities and highways, right? Suppose we're sort of talking about goal two on this at the next meeting. I don't know what we're going to be talking about, but like, I would, you know, if you could send out, A, that we're going to be talking about that, and B, send out sort of the relevant information that would be relevant to our discussion in advance of the meeting, like, it's just like, yeah, that would be very helpful, and I think would make the meeting more useful for us and for you.
We, our planning group will talk about how we want to do that. We haven't got all the exercises worked out yet, but we're working on how we're doing the information and then what we're doing at the actual meeting. So, we'll, I understand what you're saying. In some cases, it's information like this, if it's distributed like this, could be helpful just as background information, but tonight was that case. Other things like exercises, I don't know that it does a lot of good to pass it out ahead because we really want you to do part of your work as a group in, like, small groups or other things, and so it's not really a good idea to do it ahead of time.
Well, even like this beginning exercise, and I realize I wasn't here for the actual, like, doing the exercise portion, but like, had I had an hour to think about it before the meeting, I probably could have come up with better answers.
Sure, I understand. And one reason for doing it not ahead is so that we want each individual person to think about it just, in some, yeah, in some cases, it's when you, when you, like, consult for, with each other or do, you know, other thing, you get different answers, so...
Well, and if you give it to us and you say, "Don't consult with one another," that's fine, and I'd be willing to participate in that exercise, but I, you know...
Okay, I understand, I understand. And I realize you like to be prepared. I'm the same, I like to be prepared for what I'm going to. I understand, but I think the way that we're trying to plan this is that it's more, you come, you're present while we're doing it, it's a participation while you're doing it, not, and eventually, there, by the third or fourth session, there will be a document to look at in terms of draft, and we can revise. So, those are not written in stone, like, that has to be your ultimate goal. There'll be opportunities to revise and whatever, yeah. Steve?
Who does the planning group consist of?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we talked about that earlier. So, the planning, we just have a small planning group to talk about what we're doing. So, Esak is on the, Esak and myself, Deb is helping, Patsy Petrie, who's a former county board chair, because she has history of other, the other plans that were done before, and then there's a student group at the university called the Economic Consulting Student Group, and they will, they're going to be helping with part of it as well. And then we'll have different facilitators at each meeting depending on the activities that we're doing. So, there's a, there's a lot of people actually that are planning the activities.
Thank you.
Yep, Stephanie?
I apologize, I went on a campus or hot water.
Okay. It wasn't right around the corner? Okay. Oh, okay.
I apologize, but this is already covered.
Yes, the answer is yes. So, the mostly strategic plans in my history and other people's, is mostly, it's very broad, and you can see that in the first column. Here's our strategic planning ideas, and those are, those are wonderful to have as an idea, but you have to have some way of, right, and that's why the question I says, "How are you going to measure that?" Yeah.
Because when I first came in, I saw the, I thought it was really a structured document.
Correct. And also to know that my intention is not to end up with drawers and drawers full of things, but, but over the six years, we will end up with drawers of things, over six years. So, there, my, my plan, and this is, I'm just thinking in my mind how this is pictured, is we're going to do this exercise, come up with a vision of where we would like to end up, then we're going to develop the two years for the board terms, two years sort of action plans of things we can do to move us in that direction, some of which we may not get to in six years, but it will at least make, make us moving in the right way that we want to be going, and then there'll be a measurable outcome that we can determine how we're successful or not. We can all say we'd love to live in a safe community, but we might have 20 different definitions of what that is. Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight. I hope you felt that it was useful, and moving forward, we will, we'll see you again next month to do this again. The meeting is adjourned.